I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and is a civil, which repeteeth just as for all.
Mr. P, will you please call the roll?
Georgia Holmes?
Here.
Bob Nelson?
Here.
Martin Meyer?
Here.
Arlene Kane?
Here.
Sam Powers?
Here.
Ron Richards?
Here.
Carol Ann Swartzaback?
Here.
Skylar Whistle?
We do have a form. Accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Are there any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And again, I'd remind each member of the council, if there are any items on the agenda that you have a conflict of interest, please note that prior to voting. You also have in your packages the minutes from the May 21st council meeting. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council meeting minutes from the 21st of May. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have in your packages the claims for bills in between of $141,197.49. I'd accept a motion to approve that. Those bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have current claims of $74,046.8. I'd accept a motion to approve those current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $74,046.8.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those current claims are approved. You also have in your packages a list of Wells Fargo credit card claims for $3,933.33. Accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims for $3,933.33.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve those claims. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? We have none scheduled. Seeing none, move on to personnel. Accept a motion to approve personnel actions A through E.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through E.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve personnel actions listed on your agenda from A through E. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those actions are approved. And we do have a public hearing at 7:10. We will continue on through committee reports, so stand by to be interrupted. Carol Ann, could you give us a recap on Advent Finance, please?
We met today at City Hall. We continue the review of the employee holiday pay policy. Changes are being presented to us at every meeting. That should be noted. Mr. P, maybe it's taking us so long with this. The committee requested the change from one week to 30 days from Advent leave, our salary employed required to flex time worked on a holiday. After many meetings, we cannot agree to support a change from double time not added to, and one and a half times added for holiday pay. Your council president can explain how we arrived at this decision when the new council addresses this issue. This is a difficult calculation to explain. The finance officer has spent a great deal of her time and effort to make sure we understand this policy and the reasons behind it. There are options that can be looked at. Next item on global business, code of conduct policy. The mayor addressed this and advised that we rescind these policies. The policies. This will be on the next council agenda on the 18th of June. New business. We heard the finance officer report. We reviewed the safety manual, and there was a requested change made by President Bob Nelson. We discussed items for the first 2018 supplemental appropriation ordinance. We also looked at an update on Building 1 at the State Veterans Home. Also, the 2019 donation policy not to accept request was approved by the committee. Resolution 2018-12, the cantilever sidewalk was discussed cost for 18%. We asked for that amount. And that's all.
Okay, busy meeting. Thank you, Carol Ann. Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia Neil. We had a fly-in Saturday.
Yeah, we had a busy weekend, actually, and Saturday was very successful for our first annual family fun fly-in day. We had 20 participants that did the flower bomb drops, and our first place winner was Mr. Nellen. He's 10 years old, and he came within 12 feet, actually was 11 something, of the target. It's very hard when you're going 60 miles an hour to drop something and make a hit. But they learned a lot, and I think they all enjoyed it very much. We did have the gliders giving rides, too, and they were going all day until about 4 o'clock in the evening. So they were very busy. The next meeting will be this Friday in the morning at 8 to go over some of the things that were successful or not successful for the fly-in, so they would like to plan for another one next year. I think everybody enjoyed it, and I have to thank the pilots that volunteered their time in their planes and everything else to bring the people out to the airport. And I think it should be well noted that we're trying to get people, the public, to get out there and see what we have. And this was our first attempt, and the balloons couldn't take off this time because the wind was too strong. I guess about 200 feet up, it was really strong, so they said no. And we were going to have our short drop, our short takeoff, and we call it slot, slot or something, where the plane stopped and take off and all that.
STOL.
STOL, yeah. Anyway, I'm learning a lot about the airport. You guys need to do that, too. Anyway, we had the ambulance there and the fire trucks there and the police, and so I would like to thank them also. And please put that in our minutes if you wouldn't mind. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you, Georgia, and I know you were out there all day. Appreciate your participation. And I want the name of that winner for the bomb drop so that we can sign him up for the Air Force.
I do have one comment that we did get a boy to sign up for the CIP, Civil Air Patrol. They do give free pilot license up to the age of 16. I guess through Civil Air Patrol, and so I believe joined. So that was a good thing.
Yes, and I think that's a very, very good program. Well, the time is approaching 7:10, and so we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. And what we'll be looking at here is a license for the owners of the Verdette House, an application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license, and that'd be used at 1729 Minnetka Avenue. So at this time, I would open that public hearing.
Aye.
And are there any comments from the audience to speak to this?
Hi. He's my chair, so.
Hi, Vicky.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Could you get up close to the mic so that we...
Absolutely. Can I just...
You'll be picking it up.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Unfortunately, my husband didn't be here. He works for the grow road, and he's on a train right now. What our main reason, and I think that's probably what you all are interested in, is why we're wanting to get approved for a license. And the Verdette House, we're currently on Airbnb, VRVO, and we have, it's been, we're very grateful. It's been very successful with our bookings, but we're looking towards a future, and we think it is a beautiful property. And what we're wanting to utilize it for also down the road is to open it up for weddings, kind of a small venue. It could be a retirement party, graduation party. I talked to a photographer about possibly using the location for shoots, things like that. So we're looking down the road, and we're kind of anxious to get started on that. So that is our main reason for that. We also are going to be having our grand opening. It would be July 31st on a Tuesday, and we're hoping everybody can attend, and we will try to get the word out there for everybody in the city. Because I think it's amazing. There's a lot of people that haven't either been on the property or in the property. So we want to share that with everybody. We have really broad visions of trying to make it more of a historical landmark than what it really is. So we've been communicating with different people on council about what the future is for us. So that is, kind of sums up in a nutshell. I don't want to keep y'all waiting, but if you have any questions for me, I try to do my best to answer them.
Are there any questions for Vicky? Are there any comments from the public? This is an open hearing. Are there any comments from the council?
Good luck.
Oh, thank you.
And Vicky, we do appreciate what you're doing and what you're seeing. The property, it looks very nice from the outside. It's attractive, and anything that can draw people to our community, we appreciate the blood, sweat, and tears that go into it.
Yes, we put a lot in there. Yeah, it's Phil and I, and we have a six-year-old, too, so we're all involved in it. And it's exciting because we are getting people knocking at our door, and they want to see it. So it's just, it's amazing. It's a great feeling. And we're pleased to be in Hot Springs.
Okay, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the time is 7:13. I'll go ahead and close the hearing at this time, and I would accept a motion from the council to approve the application for the malt beverage license at the Verdette House.
I'd like to make that motion to approve the application at the Verdette House, 1729 Minnetka Avenue.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. If we approve this request, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We move on in our committee reports. Custer, Fall River Regional Waste Management, Ron?
Next meeting will be 12th of July at 7:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
In our downtown historic preservation commission, Carol Ann?
We'll meet Wednesday at 5:00 at the library.
And Skylar's not here for Evans Plunge Advisory Committee. Parks Recreation Beautification Cultural Development Party?
Parks and Rec met today at the Mueller Center at 3:00. And in old business, we discussed some of the research being done, and then we're moving forward in support of a toxic-free weed control program for city parks and properties. The committee was pleased to hear that Jason Happy is already utilizing some similar applications for the golf course, and so look forward to meeting with him and having him invite him to a Parks and Rec meeting to share some of that information from us, and we're in conjunction with Jason. We are going to be receiving an update from, it's Fayetteville, Arkansas, who had used the goats previously, and it looks like that could be a good utilization for, maybe not for the actual lawn areas, but for slopes and hillside treatments, and that's, it sounds like that is specifically what they had utilized it for. He's going to be sending some information. They will be sending information to us on some of the concerns and how they address some of those concerns as well. The committee received an update from Allison Ritterbush on the Black Hills Mountain Bike Association Youth Racing Series, and there's an event planned, a race planned for Hot Springs on September 30. The course is close to being finalized, with a planned start and finish at the State Veterans Home. Black Hills Mountain Bike Association will be looking for sponsors to provide lunch and water for the race, as well as volunteers to help with the race. And the race includes a youth, middle school, and high school age categories, and we're excited about it to bring hundreds of people to Hot Springs.
What's the date?
September 30. Committee was happy to have Bart Seekan attendance today, and Bart was able to provide accurate updates on many of the ongoing maintenance items with our parks, and we had discussed some of the specifics for continuing work, or starting work, actually, on the new backboard at the tennis court. Barbara Walters gave us an update on Niskullp, and she's working to form a school league, so she continues working on that and doing that by herself, pretty much. So it's a lot of work to be done, but that looks like it's an exciting prospect for Hot Springs as well. We've also looked at some of the projects that are slated for 2018, and are excited that Chautauqua Bridge, which will be part of the extension of the Freedom Trail, is moving, that's actually moved up on the calendar. And also had discussed some of the possibilities for the new picnic shelter in Brookside Park, and also about anchoring some of the picnic tables, which tend to migrate down to the Riverside and Brookside Park. So our next meeting will be Tuesday, July 10th at 3:00 p.m., and the public is invited to attend.
Good, Marty, thank you. It sounds like you had a productive meeting. Appreciate that. Planning zoning, Commissioner Marley?
The next planning and zoning meeting will be Wednesday, June 20th, 7:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bob?
The next public safety meeting will be third Wednesday of this month, to apply at City Hall.
Okay, Public Works?
Public Works met on May 29th at City Hall. Mayor Ricotti, Kim, Tracy, Scott, myself are present. You have it on your agenda tonight, but the big thing for us was the Houston Avenue sewer project. We had two bids that we opened for that project, a little bid from Quinn Construction. That is on your council agenda tonight. If the council approves that agenda item, its anticipated work would begin late June or over July. Two bids. A low bid was from Quinn Construction for $149,970. The second bid was from Sign and Materials for $178,915. The $178,000 figure was one that was kind of originally talked about. I think I may have mentioned that it might have been possibly that high. So the fact that it comes in almost $25,000 from under the anticipated high is a good thing. Improvements of the wastewater treatment plants. The materials have been on, have been put on board for the repair of the wet wells down there, so that's progressing. The request for proposals for workforce housing. Those proposals will be opened at the June 12th Public Works meeting. The request for proposals for the brush and landfill, first piles of the landfill. Mr. P asked me, Kim, and I want to confirm that I said the right thing. The grant request has been submitted for that, thank you, to the Department of South Dakota Environment and Natural Resources. I had mentioned last time that we're also looking at Chapter 4, animal and fowl awareness, specifically chickens, seeing how we can enhance what the city is able to do as far as monitoring and controlling chickens. So that conversation is still ongoing. The Hubber Canyon, we talked around there. We talked about the fact that it's going to be chip sealed. There's some patchwork that needs to be completed before the chip seals is put down. That work's been completed, so chip seal will be the next thing, chip seal will be the next thing that happens there. We also talked about a construction appeal group. The committee feels that that is a good idea. We'll just need to look at what the makeup and the responsibilities of that group would be, and Scott's can help us understand that. Question, Georgia?
Yeah, I couldn't understand what you said. Construction?
Construction Appeal Group is what we're calling it at this point. Marty had talked about, I believe, the Freedom Trail expansion, the bridge out there. That work is expected to resume once the Go On The Road project is completed. It's been switched around?
It was mainly, I just want to clarify. It was switched around as of yesterday when we received the petition for the water assessment district. I did not feel that it was in our best interest to go ahead and put all the road base down and the buildings on top of it and tear it up in fall to put in a water line. So we're going to get it down to a road grade where you can drive on it, and then wait to see what happens with this water project. If the water project gets approved, then we will push that off until fall to finish. It's still drivable. It's still usable. It's just not at a finished circus. And then the Chautauqua Park Bridge will be put in, and the trail finished. Just with that one thing, it kind of, it seemed the right thing to do, just to put that on hold until such time as we knew if we're going to be terrified of it again.
Okay. So then the road to the Timon Gallant Tank, that will be finished enough so that the city can use it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Then we have one new business item. Because of the recent extreme weather that Hot Springs has been having, there's been a number of small leaks that have occurred at the library. So we'll need to take a look at those and see what needs to be done in those state of care. The next Public Works Committee meeting will be June 12th, 3:00 at City Hall.
Thank you, Bob. Very good summary. Southern Hills Economic Development, Georgia and Marty?
The Shadco, we will meet again on the 15th of this month at Woolies. Right now, they're working basically on affordable housing and the tips and encouraging people to look at Hot Springs for building homes. So that's about all that's going on right now.
You have to think that, Marty, no, it's okay. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, and Skylar's not here this evening. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting will be the 12th of June, 7:00 p.m. at Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
In conference, if Plan, Sam?
We have a meeting scheduled for June 6th at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we have a couple of resolutions to consider. The first one is Resolution 2018-11, Jennings Bridge Improvement Grant Funding Agreement Authorization. As you know, Hot Springs did receive a big bridge improvement grant from South Dakota DOT. You do have a copy of that statement of the responsibilities for both the state and the city concerning this bridge improvement grant. The overall project is about a $1.2 million project. The city will incur 20% of the cost of the state will pay.
That's the grant amount. So the total project cost is plus 20% on top of that?
Okay, yeah, it'd be plus 20% on top of that. That's the amount that the state will pay, I'm sorry. We do have responsibilities for engineering, and there's some other responsibilities lined out in there. I just wanted to make the council aware of that before we accepted a motion and discuss the Jennings Bridge Grant. Obviously, this is an important bridge in our community. It connects us with our emergency services, and the bridge has been failing for a number of years and does need to be replaced. So I would ask for a motion at this time to approve Resolution 2018-11.
I'll make that motion to approve Resolution 2018-11 with all the requirements stated in our agreement with the state of South Dakota for the Jennings Bridge and authorize the mayor to take responsibility for that. That's what it states in there. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We do accept Resolution 2018-11, the Jennings Bridge Improvement Grant Funding Agreement Authorization. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion from the council?
I was just going to make a comment. There's a lot of requirements in here. And March 29th of 2022, it has to be completed and paid for by us. And all the other, I mean, there's like 30 things we have to do to make that grant work. So thank you for applying for that, and I hope we did it. Yeah, we did it.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, hearing none. I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have before you Resolution 2018-12. This is a Highway 385 cantilevered sidewalk engineering services TAP grant letter of intent. As you know, we are attempting to get a cantilevered sidewalk designed and engineered into the road reconstruction project. And one of the things that we would need to do is to look at providing the engineering services to get that designed. There are grants available, and this is what we would be using this application for, is to get a grant to assist in us paying for the engineering of that cantilevered sidewalk project.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-12, Highway 385 cantilevered sidewalk engineering services TAP grant letter of intent.
I want to second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do apply for this grant. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I would like to add that we talked about this at the admin meeting today, and we'd ask him to provide us the information about what the city would pay for that. Thank you, Kim. The amount is 32, the city's share would be 82%, it would be $32,400 for these engineering services. Correct?
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Again, I think this is one of the things that can help get that project underway. We certainly are looking forward for other opportunities for the state to help us fund this because, as we've discussed before, this is a safety enhancement to our river street area, plus an opportunity for economic development in our downtown, and coincides with plans we have for improving the Centennial Park River area.
Can I also state that we were, we talked about that today. We were also shown how we're going to lose our sidewalk and the buildings if we don't do this and if you don't agree with some of the other reasons. That's a good enough reason to agree with that.
Thank you, Carol Ann. That's an excellent, excellent point. And that, again, is very, very important to maintain the vitality of our downtown area. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask all those in favor, vote by signifying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That... Opposed, that resolution is approved. Remember last meeting, we move on to old business, last meeting we did open some bids for some salvage material that we had off the old garage that the Canton Water Station wants. We did, we have that reviewed by Public Works and it looks like everything was in order in Gary Romi's bid with the 19 sheets that he bid for $465.41 and the nine sheets of tin for $81.90. I'd accept a motion to approve or awarding that bid to Gary Romi.
I'll make a motion to approve the award to the high bidder, Gary Romi, with 19 sheets of tin that measure 34 feet 6 inches long by 36 inches wide, bid $465.41. And the nine sheets of tin that measure 14 feet long by 36 inches wide, bid $81.90.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept that bid. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have three items of new business. First of all, we need a possible motion and discussion to award the Houston Avenue Sewer Improvement Project bid to the low bidder, Quinn Construction, for $149,970. As you heard in Bob Nelson's recap, they were the low bidder. We had received two bids, one from, the other one was from Simon Construction for $178. So I'd accept a motion to award that Houston Avenue bid to Quinn Construction.
I'd like to make a motion to award the Houston Avenue Sewer Improvement Project bid to low bidder, Quinn Construction, for $149,970.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that award to Quinn Construction. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
It's about time.
And again, we did have our city engineer, Tracy Bastian, did look at the bid award. I believe his estimate was somewhere in a neighborhood of $170,000, which is within the ballpark, and all of the bid items bid correspond. So he would recommend that we also approve it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We thank you. You're welcome.
You're welcome. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve the 2018 City of Hot Springs Safety Manual, updated to include a safety benefit improvement recommendations. I'd accept a motion to approve that manual, which you should have a copy in your packages.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 City of Hot Springs Safety Manual, updated to include safety benefit improvement recommendations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that, those changes to the Hot Springs Safety Manual. And again, this is as a result of our insurance cover has done an assessment of our practices and has made some recommendations. This helps us improve our, over our insurance premiums. And Bob, I believe, did you have a couple of minor changes that?
Yeah, if Harley would amend her motion to include a change on page 13.
I'd like to amend my motion.
I was given a chance to open up and see what we were talking about.
To include a change on page 13.
The, it's under 4.4, operating special equipment. And our copies, it's struck out. A report of this training is to be documented by the department head or supervisor. And the recommendation is to leave that in the policy. Thinking there is that when we're talking about special equipment, the operators need to be able to demonstrate that they're qualified to run that equipment and at least on site. So that if inspectors come in for safety purposes, insurance purposes, that the folks that are certified operating the equipment are in fact authorized. It's written in to leave in, a report of this training is to be documented by the department head or supervisor.
Right, that petition?
Yes.
Okay, we do have an amendment. Who seconded that motion?
I'm the second.
Would you amend your second?
Yes.
We have amended motion and amended second. Open this board discussion.
I think that's a good idea. I like the idea of putting that in there, that documentation, documentation.
Yeah, I think, again, it was discussed in the committee meeting this afternoon and I think we all agree that that was a good recommendation. Hearing no further discussion, I'd ask all those in favor to approve the amended motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that amended motion does carry. And item C, we have a possible motion and discussion to set a public hearing to act on the application for retail onoffs, sale malt beverage licenses from Linda Long and Brittany Schultz for Sancho's Bar and Grill, and that's located at 237 North River Street. And we'd set that hearing for 7:20 p.m. on June 18th.
I'd make a motion to set a public hearing to act on the application for retail onoff and sale malt beverage license from Linda Long and Brittany Schultz, Sancho's Bar and Grill LLC used at 237 North River Street. The hearing is set for 7:20 p.m. on June 18th.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do set that public hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our agenda, Finance Officer Misty, could you give us your report, please?
Senior Patkins, you received the financial reports through May 31st, the same ones you're used to seeing. What you're not used to seeing so far this year is the general fund having a gain. We've finally come out of our loss. When we compare revenues and expenditures to date in that fund, we have a gain of $66,458 as of the end of May. And also our additional sales tax fund now shows a gain of $25,271.18. So that's something you're not used to seeing. We had been being asked for the last couple months, is this normal or is it okay we still see reds? So that, we're starting to see the uptick with the sales tax. We also received our property tax, our first semi-annual property tax we're getting from the county, which helps significantly. And we hope to see raises in sales tax through our shoulder or peak season, not shoulder peak season, is what the tours and experts call this time we're entering too. So hopefully continue to see gains in those funds. If you have any questions about any of those social losses, I'd be happy to talk through those with you. Cash balance reports and investment reports, been a long time since we've had an investment report that totaled over $5 million. It makes sense though, since we're setting aside money for some big projects and improvements coming up. It's nice to see that. If you have any questions about what is available of those balances, please let me know. Thanks for your thorough review of the big grant. It's a big deal and so it's important that we review and understand the things that we're agreeing to when we set those types of grants. And you'll hear of our auditors at the June 18th meeting when they do a readup and some of the things they look for with that single audit. And this grant will also be over the threshold, so we'll need a single audit again for next year or the year that we receive these grant funds, since any amount is over $750,000. So this one definitely will be. S D M L is hosting the 2018 Elected Officials Workshop in Pier, Wednesday, July 18th. Please let me know if you're able to attend by June 28th. As always, they offer very excellent workshops. This is, I like their description, they call it a crash course. So it's one day, a lot of information they're going to cover, workers' compensation, liability issues, municipal officials and employees, liquor licensing and laws, financial and compliance matters, open meeting and executive session views and don'ts, and conflict of interest for municipal officials. So we saw that into a day. If you're up for it, let me know and we'll add you to the reservation list. Still working on the 2019 budget. We did send out the Excel budget worksheets to each of the department heads for their review and input. Kim and I talked about the value of taking each of their requests and putting it all into the master document that you all review and going over that with each of them so they understand the big picture, especially those in our general fund, our enterprise funds kind of are in their own box. But hopefully this will help the departments that are making requests understand what you're facing, the big picture. And I think that's a great idea. Because of scheduling in June, some of those meetings are going to be taken by Kim and some by Kim and I, but we will get together and go over all the requests with all of the department heads together. So looking forward to that. And then I do still need to hear back from those council members that'll still be here for the options we're looking at for budget hearings, the 24th and 26th, or the 31st and August 2nd. I'd like to get those scheduled. So if you have a preference on those dates, please let me know. Thank you Administrative Finance Committee for supporting the 2019 budgetary funding requests. After the hearings last year, letters were sent to organizations that requested funds indicating future donation requests would not be accepted by the city. I just wanted to make sure once again that we support and stand by that. There will be a new council, but I didn't want to give anyone asking me for information about our 2019 budgetary funding request information that wasn't correct. So thank you for supporting that. If you are one of the members that are leaving in July, please consider returning your S D M L handbook for municipal officials, that's the blue binder unless you want to keep it and read through it every time you're not a council member. If they can be recycled and reused by our new council, it saves us $60 and it most definitely is a vital tool for new council members to understand that it is a great handbook that is separated by things like liquor laws or assessments or finance or budget or legal. So it is a great tool and please consider recycling that and really any other plans, documents, reports that you no longer need, we'd be happy to take them. Tuesday, the 5th, which is tomorrow, Barb Metzen and I will lead for the S D M L Finance Officer School in Sioux Falls. We're both looking forward to the workshop, so I want to thank you for allowing us to attend. We'll both be out in the office this 6th, 7th, and 8th. So if you call in or stop in, please be kind to those gals as they're doing all the same work with half the help. Thank you for all you do and looking forward to one last meeting with this council.
Thank you, Misty. City Administrator Report, Kim.
It's been a busy couple weeks since our last meeting. I want to give a couple kudos out, we've got actually a lot of people that are doing things. Our street department and parks department came out full force after we've had some localized flooding, did some great cleanup work on people's individual lot yards and unplugged drains and generally did a lot of cleanup of downed things. So they have a lot on their plate in that they drop everything and take care of this to make sure that town always looks great. We do appreciate that. We have a group of volunteers from our water aerobics class Wednesdays at Evans Plunge that are volunteering to clean up the front planting bed. We have a plant worth planting there, but no funds for it. So they decided to take it upon themselves, they got a 75% off deal on some plants, they're doing all the labor themselves. They are doing a great job, so if you see them out there, stop by and tell them what a great job they're doing. We also have a great number of people that volunteered with the Flyon Family Fund Day. I know Georgia talked a great deal about it. Behind the scenes, the street department, Mueller Center, the Chamber of Commerce, Evans Plunge, all helped out, as well as the advisory committee for the airport, we're all hands on deck, volunteering their planes, volunteering, you know, donating gas, donning on orange vests. Tracy Bastian was out there doing measurements of the flower bombing. Georgia was fearless, she was just going around organizing things, jumping in where she needed to. You couldn't have a better council representative for that advisory committee, she was all hands on deck. So it was great seeing everybody pull together. If you didn't make it out there, great time had by all and even with some gusty winds, it was a lot of fun. We have the upcoming summer version of the Puppy Plunge. It's coming up Sunday, June 10th, 6 to 8 at the outside pool. So if you have a fuzzy friend that you'd like to go swimming with, it's $5 for you and your dog and a dollar for any additional people that you bring with you. It's a great deal and should be a lot of fun. I think the dogs will appreciate not having so much echo like we did when in the inside pool, so it should be a good time. We have been working, I wanted to clarify some stuff on the budget. And Misty and I have a really good idea on this budget plan. Unfortunately, I'm leaving on a vacation at the end of this month, so I have the week where she's away, I'm meeting with people. When she's here, we're meeting together and then she gets to deal with everything while I'm gone, of all the other questions that come down before we meet one last time as department head group and look at everything as big picture. So hopefully this touch and go will work, but I think that we're going to have everybody really on point for budget this year and they're going to really have a good, clear understanding of what our limitations are when we put together a budget and just how much we have already kind of set aside for projects, insurances, other things like that that we have no control over. And it gives us a very, very small of a working budget and I think it's going to be eye-opening. The R F Q for the airport engineering is going to be due June 29th at the airport advisory meeting, so we'll be working towards that and that'll be coming up at a future meeting. I did get to a hospitality training called How to Keep People Coming Back. I thought I was going because I do a lot of marketing for the golf course and Evans Plunge and I went, but Chris Hansen. But I got back a lot of really good information on just how to be a leader in a department or an organization. You know, one of the things that stuck with me and I always go for these kind of graphic things, but it says a fish rots from the head down. And it really says to us that, you know, as leaders, what we allow, what we perpetuate sets the tone for the whole body. And that really struck me hard and I do my very best to be a good leader for all of the people that are underneath me and work with me so that we can make a better work environment that just equalizes and equals to better customer service for our citizens. And that's, and that's what we're here for. So I think with that, that's the end of what I've been up to and turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Just one quick question, are lifeguards trained for rescuing dogs?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Mouch and mow.
A busy, busy time, Kim, really appreciate all the hard work. Just a couple things I wanted to go over in my report. First of all, as was mentioned earlier, in Admin Finance, we talked about the Council Code of Conduct. Been looking at that for a couple of months and made some pretty significant revisions. And I just wanted to, as I went through that, I felt that it was important that we look at, many of those things are covered in South Dakota law and the advice that we get from the municipal league. And to come up with a very detailed code of conduct to cover every issue is next to impossible. I think the better role is that we, first of all, as a mayor, that I take the leadership role in communicating what's expected of the council. And secondly, that as those issues come up, they get resolved so that each and everyone knows what's expected and we can work through those. And the council, you serve as a check and balance for me as a mayor, that if I get out of line or whoever holds this office gets out of line, you have a check and a balance. balance that can, can keep those issues in order. In extreme situations, again, we have our attorney that's, we've hired to give us assistance in making sure we make right decisions. There are not many options for council discipline itself, but if that is necessary, we would certainly rely on codified law and our attorney to advise us. But I don't think that would be necessary if we keep the communication open. Everyone is passionate about their opinions and I think that's good. But I think that we have a council that is very functional and I appreciate your support. I know that in the past, people have felt there was a need for a code of conduct. And if that's still the case, please feel free to stop by and discuss this issue with me. And again, this will be on the agenda for our next council meeting to determine which way that we want to go. But I just wanted to get out there my thoughts about making that recommendation to the Admin and Finance Committee. Just a couple other things. We're getting into that season where we've had a lot of rain and hot temperatures and the grass, grass is shooting up. As always, we want to put our prime focus on our parents and our community. I would encourage all the citizens to keep their yards mowed. Coming from a military background, appearance is a very, very important thing. As a base commander, we spend over $1 million a year keeping the base mowed and looking good. And that investment was made because professional, good-looking environment does send a message. And I think we send a message in our community if we take care of our properties and enforce our, our ordinances. So we have in the Development Coordinator will be get out, getting out, answering any complaints that our citizens have and inspecting properties and leaving some door hangers on the door where necessary as a reminder. But I just hope that the community would cooperate. We have a beautiful city and we just need to take some pride in, in keeping it looking that way. So I would encourage that. And one final thing, just a reminder, tomorrow is election day. We have a privilege to be able to vote for who we want to represent us in our state and county and also with the school board. So I would encourage everyone to make sure you get out and vote. With that, I'm complete with my report. And I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded a couple times, I think. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.